Yeah, that's pretty cool. That's awesome. Good old Davis County colors and.
I wish this had. I wish we could like scroll through the documents and do stuff on that.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't doesn't screw up our data or we could have separate windows. I just wish I could turn it off.
We need to be kind of like mints, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We could definitely, yeah, we should.
Yeah, all the tears. Anne Marie, Anne Marie.
I couldn't find my notebook, so I stole this card. Stranger things.
Why do you have an iPad?
Why do you need stranger? Okay, we have something important to talk about. We should have like moldy mints.
You know, winter green or the fireballs.
I have time for that. Oh, I was gonna put in a flavor request for soda. Send me an email because I will not remember.
But you will make it.
But then I'll have to share, you'd have to share with Connie for me to.
As long as it.
I thought, so the oldest used to have little, little drawers. We don't have drawers, do we? Kind of a bummer.
They're expensive.
I wish they would have rounded this too. That's kind of weird.
Handwriting.
That's too neat for mine.
You asked Mike?
Mike's got his, I'm sure.
She can read it.
I, I have a hard time reading mine.
Who is it? I wonder who it belongs to?
Which turn is it? Oh, so it's not me.
I wish it was mine because I can read it.
That's right, Levi was making some notes.
It might be Levi, but then again, that, that packet was the packet from when we've had everybody there. So you have a lot of.
And Levi left before we did, so I think he might, it might be.
This is like.
I don't know, I was left in the middle of the table and I was just like, well, if somebody wants it back.
That's how I do my sixes too.
Yeah, but have you seen Mike's handwriting?
Oh, I'm sure it's chicken scratch.
It's my own.
Does it want anybody to know?
It's my own.
I couldn't write a full thing in person because I'd forget some of the, the big letters.
I don't.
Oh, I love writing.
I don't really write very often either. And when I do, I can't read it, so it doesn't matter.
You figure yourself out?
Mm-hmm. It'll work out. It's just gonna take a minute to, to work out all the keys, you know? Honestly, we've not been to. Yes.
Oh, Melinda's talking to herself.
You do? Oh, you know what? That's, you know what, Nate? That's true though. Okay.
What kind of pen do you?
If he's using a fountain pen? Then your handwriting is pristine? If I have a cross fountain pen, then I can write nicely. Yeah, really? I, I don't, I probably still couldn't read mine because I'm such a bad writer. The monitor? I should have brought my laptop. It's in the car. Should I go get it? The M agreement.
The G.
No, the bottom one. No. This one. Oh, this one. Yeah, no, what she's been talking about is gonna be, it's gonna require her, her, her supporting them. Oh, John, sometimes, sometimes. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting for May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Our opening will be provided by Councilmember John Adams, who will then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Fantastic. I'm just gonna offer a prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we come before you at this time as city leaders, as well as staff, and all the great citizens of Kaysville and those visiting. And we're so grateful for this country we live in, the state of Utah and the city of Kaysville. We're thankful for everything that everyone does to make this city so fantastic. We're thankful for the winter that we received and the weather that we're receiving right now. And ask you to bless all those who are concerned with flooding, that they can have their concerns quelled and that we can help them in any way that possible. Bless the President and all of the leaders of our country, that they will make good decisions. And bless us tonight, that we can do the same in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Anne Marie, very much. All right. The first item order of business is a call to the public, and we have one person signed up to speak. Lorraine Starkey, you'll have three minutes. Take it away.
I want to thank my, I'm, I'm Lorraine Starkey at five seventy-three South, three fifty East, Kaysville, Utah. And I want to thank each of you for, for the time that you put in, which I truly appreciate. I know that my daughter today said, well, Lorraine, she didn't say called me by Lorraine, but she called me mom. And she said, you know, if you want to have an opinion, you ought to, you ought to run for city council. And I said, oh, no, I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to choose somebody that can do it for me because I do not have the time. And I, I know it takes time and I appreciate that. The issue that I was looking at today, and I don't presume to know everything, it just, as I sent a twelve-year-old to National Science Olympiad this, today, to drive fifteen hours to, to Kansas, I was worried because they were driving in a car that was, had a lot of miles on it. And I voiced the worry and something happened. My mother came up with some, some funds and they were able to use a rental car. And so I found out that it's all right to voice some concerns because sometimes something happens, even if it can't be taken care of by me. The concern that I was looking at was that one of the first items, when it was talking about the uniting with the, the Davis County to, to, to qualify for funds. And we, that's something that we've done for thirteen years and that we have to do for three years in a row. And I don't know what all the qualifications are, but I, I worry a little bit about qualifying for funds from stipulations that are not the city's when it requires us to do something that we would not normally do anyway. And so I, I am grateful for, as I've watched this council scrutinize things before, and I appreciate the, the line-by-line detailing that says, do we want to do this? Is it in our best interest? Is it in the best interests of our city? I like that. I like the questioning. I appreciate when we don't just blanket statement consent items and say, rubber stamp. And I have an uncle that was an ecclesiastical leader and he really liked it when people didn't rubber stamp. He liked the council. So I'm inviting us to look at this a little bit more carefully to make sure it's something that we want, if we want to do it. And I appreciate your counsel and discernment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes?
Would you be willing to listen to someone else speak? She came in right as I was grabbing. It's up to you.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Come on up. Please just state your name. You don't need to tell us your address.
My name is Liz Sears. Thank you for hearing me. Rules are a little different here than Leighton, and I appreciate you listening. I have lived in technically Leighton for the last twenty years, twenty years and a few months on the border of Kaysville. My children went to Fairfield Junior High, Morgan Elementary, and they are now at Davis High, two of them. The other two at Perone. I am also a Realtor. I've been doing this job for twenty years. And what I've witnessed in the last three years has been, to say the least, horrifying. My children have not yet bought a home. I don't know if they can, if things continue the way that they have been. Four years ago, Realtors saw this coming. We chose to spend over a million dollars of the dues that we had raised to start to educate the public and educate city councils and whoever was willing to listen on how we could save affordable housing so that my children, your children, could buy a home. I wanted to share with you the stats and how they have changed. On the piece of paper you're looking at, the median-priced home in Kaysville right now is six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. The current FHA interest rate is five point seven five percent. That will require my children to come up with a down payment of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Their monthly payment will be four thousand, one hundred and sixty-two. And the income that they must earn to qualify for their first home of a median price in Kaysville is over a hundred and ten thousand. That's not sustainable. Just within the last two weeks, we started to see again a surge in the real estate market. I had a couple of my colleagues say, oh, it's nice to see houses moving again. And I thought, you don't understand the big picture. What I would like to share with you over the next series of meetings, I'm going to be coming to share a little bit of information of how we as citizens and how we as city council members are voting for you and city planning and everything can address this housing affordability. My board and several of the Realtors are engaging with other citizens so that all of us together can learn. Just a few of the things to give you a heads up on that is the building permits that were requested for houses in the starter home range, used to be thirty to forty percent of building permits, now they're eight percent. One of the reasons why is because constantly developers are being shut down for what a lot of people consider high-density housing. But back in the day, high-density housing was those little houses in Ogden. It was condos, it was townhomes, it was different ways that somebody could build a home in the price range that a first-time home buyer could afford. It does not mean rentals, it does not mean apartments. And there are ways that as cities that we can fast-track programs to be able to create more of this affordable housing. And part of it too is to incentivize builders to build it. Another thing that we as Realtors did is we lobbied for, helped create a bill to pass a fifty-million-dollar first-time homebuyer credit to go towards houses priced at four hundred and fifty thousand or less. The reason we did that is because we want to incentivize, again, builders to build these projects. And we need to have the help of the cities to get those projects approved and fast-tracked. I'll share more information on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item of business is a presentation and a proclamation declaring May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as Public Works Week. And I will hurry and read this for you. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Kaysville City. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other infrastructures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Kaysville City to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, Mayor Tamara Tran, along with the Kaysville City Council, to hereby designate the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as Public Works Week. In Kaysville City, and urge all citizens, businesses, and civic organizations to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And witness whereof, I have adhered to set my seal and cause this seal to be in the city of Kaysville this day, the eighteenth of May, two thousand twenty-three. We are, yeah, I think we should clap for that. That's awesome. Thank you.
Clap that through without making any mistake.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for that, very. Honestly, as we've driven around, you guys can see what's happening. This, this winter was the most horrible snowy, snowy winter we've had in years and years. We are so grateful for everyone that helps us in the city, specifically Public Works. They work long hours, they work overnight, they work in horrible conditions, and they do it because they love it. And, and we just really appreciate them. Does anyone have anything you would like to add to that? Feel free.
Sure. I just want to echo what the mayor said. In my neighborhood alone, there's been several instances where a pipe breaks late at night, middle of the night, on, on a holiday. And our city employees are just right there and they, they do such a great job. And so, like you said, Mayor, I would like to encourage everyone to, when you see our folks out there working, say thanks to them.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I just want to say thanks also. I've seen a lot of the hard work. I know this winter was hard. And I've seen y'all work on holidays and, and like Spinn said, in the middle of the night. And I just want to thank you so much for everything you do for our city. I think people don't realize how much everyone in Public Works does for the city and it's greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you. You know, it's not as visible as a job as police and fire. And so I know you don't always get the treats that they get and the attention. So anyway, we want to make sure you're sure that you know how much we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, conflicts of interest. Do we have anything? No? Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Does someone want to make a motion on the consent agenda? Councilmember Oaks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A through C.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second. And if it's okay to just add, I appreciate the input that was brought by Lorraine on this. And I, for this one, because I've read through it, I feel pretty comfortable with what it is. So I don't feel like we need to maybe pull it out, but I just wanted to say that I have considered it and I've considered the things that have been brought up and, and I think it's, it's okay.
Fantastic. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? No? Oh, Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could talk about resolution or A.
Because there's been a motion and a second, we have to either.
Right.
Can't do a question or?
Well, we can do comments, but not really questions unless you decide to do a substitute motion.
No, you know, I just echo what Councilmember Hunt said. I, I looked at all the information. I feel comfortable as well. I was hoping to talk about it a little bit, just for more understanding, but yeah.
You could make a substitute motion if you choose to.
That's all I have to say on it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. All right, so let's call for a vote. We'll start down here. Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. Move on to action item six A, which is a request to rezone zero point three six acres of property located at one twenty South Main Street from healthcare district HC to public business district PB for Lane Kamalu. I will turn the time over to Melinda. I don't see Mr. Kamalu, Dr. Kamalu, so.
That would be my fault because I failed to notify him of the agenda until about an hour and a half ago. So my most sincere apologies to him. But this is a, a pretty straightforward rezone. Nothing will be changing on the property. One of the outcomes, if this is approved, is that the medical office Mr. Kamalu has will become compliant. It's, our healthcare zone has some weirdness to it and a medical office actually isn't allowed. So changing this to the professional business zone would allow his business to be in compliance and allow him also to rent out the basement, which is the whole purpose why he is bringing this forward. So just a quick overview of where this property is located at, just down the street, south of here, between Main Street and Fifty West. The future land use map from the general plan indicates that this property is to remain healthcare, but there is professional business in the vicinity. And the nature of this zone change really doesn't impact anything. So that said, we are recommending approval. This item was heard by the planning commission on April twenty-seventh. No comments have been received through email or the public comments at that meeting. And the council, excuse me, commission voted seven-zero to recommend approval to the city council. So we are recommending approval of this and I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anyone signed up to speak for this, so council, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay, seeing no questions, does someone want to make a motion?
I can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to rezone point three six acres of property located at one twenty South Main Street from the HC to PB for Lane Kamalu.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments? No comments? All right, Councilmember Oaks.
I'm aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to action item six B, approval of an exclusive negotiations agreement with Alchemy Design and Development for the property located at forty-four North Main Street. I will turn the time over to Melinda.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to just give a very brief overview of the process where, brought us to today. Last fall, we issued RFP, a request for proposals, on how to repurpose the library just north of the building here. In January, the city council was presented with two different proposals that met the requirements of that RFP. And the council then selected Alchemy to move forward with as a partner. Here we are now in May. It's taken a few months to bring this exclusive negotiations agreement forward. Hopeful that the end result of this process, at some point next year, we will be bringing a development agreement to the city council for approval. Just to kind of give also, I think, just a quick look at what the process looks like from a form, kind of like a comparison, but a formal comparison. So the RFP is, is us inquiring of developers, different parties out there to bring proposals forward. And then we reviewed those proposals. In January, kind of what we did was we selected Alchemy as a partner to date. And at this point, with an exclusive negotiation agreement, we're kind of getting engaged. And then hopefully in two thousand twenty-four, we'll have the wedding ceremony. But one of the reasons why the exclusive negotiation agreement term is out for about a year is because there are a number of items that we'll need to work on that'll take quite a bit of time to bring forward to that point where we have a development agreement. So I, I think we're all familiar with the, the building and the property here that we're considering. I just wanted to give a brief bullet point of some of the main deliverables we would expect at the end of this process. One of the main things is that Alchemy and their group will need to figure out financing of that project. I think the intent of the council was to not use taxpayer dollars to provide the renovations. So that'll be a feat that Alchemy will be in charge of to figure out what those financing proposals will be and bring those forward. We'll also need to determine a way to convey the property, whether that is through a lease agreement, some type of an agreement, or even considering selling the property. We'll need to address some of the zoning issues. Right now, the property is zoned, public use. And the proposed project wouldn't fit within that zone. So we'll have to, you know, determine what modifications we would need to, to make, including even subdividing or re-zoning that property to a different zone or amending the public use zone. We'll also require, before we come to that development agreement point in the process, that we'll have structural and tenant improvement plans. And, and once we have all of those pieces together, even a parking or a cross, cross-parking agreement, then we'll be able to compile all that as a complete package and bring that forward to the city council for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are recommending the council approve the exclusive negotiations agreement. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or where we're at tonight.
Okay, thank you. We have one person signed up to speak. I'll invite you up, Nanette. You'll pass? Oh, okay. All right, so let's bring Josh up. Would that be okay? Come on up. I just kind of wanted to reiterate some of the conversations that were, kind of the discussion that we've had prior to. Before we opened this up for an RFP process, we floated the idea out to all of the, all of the local businesses. You know, we kind of said, hey, this is our plan. We want to try to save this building. Does anyone have an interest in helping us, partnering with us on that? And so we didn't have a lot of local interest. And so then we put it out for bid, or not really bid, for proposal. And we're excited that you're here before us. So I'll turn the time over to you. Do you want to just tell us a little bit more about the project and then answer some questions? Okay.
Yeah, our, our proposal was, you know, we know that the library has a lot of historic significance and, and we wanted to kind of preserve that, but also help bring some, some more life and vibrancy to, to downtown Kaysville and help support some of the other, you know, really unique businesses that are here already. And so the proposal that we made was to, was to convert the library into a modern food hall. So I mean, similar to, in some ways, similar to like a food court that you find in a mall. But the difference is that it's more, you know, local-based, you know, you have kind of local-based concepts. You know, we're not gonna put like a McDonald's inside the, the library. But it's, it's local, you know, concepts that would, food options, right? And you, you walk in and there's several options to choose from. If you're going with your family or a group of people, everyone can pick their own thing and then you can find a place to sit. There's a big common sitting area. Part of the proposal too was, I mean, there's a lot of space between Main Street and the building. And we wanted to kind of help activate that and align it with the, with the, with the plans for, for Main Street and, and improving the street. And so, you know, we want to build, build out of the front, a, a big patio area, a seating area, have room for, you know, in the warm months, food trucks to pull up and, and just have a lot of fun, really. I mean, and bring a lot of activity to, to downtown. And there's, you know, opportunities to partner with a lot of other, you know, organizations in the community as far as food goes and, you know, entertainment and other things. And so, yeah, I mean, we, we, you know, speaking on behalf of our group, we really appreciate, you know, all the feedback and, and working through this process with the city. And this, this exclusive negotiation agreement really gives us the confidence to move forward. We've kind of been waiting for this and, you know, but this gives us the confidence to really get to work and, and move forward and, and, you know, start spending our own dollars on, on figuring out a way for this to work. And I think like Melinda said, I mean, there's a lot of, it's a little hairy, right? To figure out all the, all the legal things with the parking and, and zoning and everything else. And so, yeah, we appreciate you understanding, you know, the, the time that that takes and, and working with us on it, so.
Right, thank you, Josh. Questions? Councilmember Adams.
Thank you. Hey, Josh, and Melinda, I appreciate your analogy. Because I felt like we were just holding hands for a long time and I wor, I worried that you guys wouldn't call us back, you know, and so.
Well, we have the same worries.
Yes, and, and, and also when my wife and I got engaged, we were engaged for three months because we wanted to get married. So that's, I guess that's my biggest concern and I would like to hear from you. You know, when I see two thousand twenty-four, my gosh, come on, let's, you know, I just don't want to, you to lose interest on your side. I also, you know, Lauren, Ms. Starkey, I should say, she's always brought up, she's brought up a good point, so we need to vet things out. So I understand that. But how, how are you, how does your group feel about the timeline? Are you okay with the fact that we're having to vet this out or is there anything that we need to do to speed it up, I guess?
No, I mean, it's a, it's a good question. And, I mean, we would love to have things move quicker, but we understand the process. And like I said, there, it is kind of complicated with the, with the requirements that the city had for, you know, not putting any money into the deal, like, you know, that, that, that takes some creative work and, and figuring out, like, you know, even just the financing portion, like how to, how to finance it and make this happen. And so, yeah, I mean, we're, we're committed to, to the project and, and finding a way to, to make it work and kind of however long that takes. But, yeah, I mean, we, we understand that it's gonna take a while to, to work through all those things and, and we're, we're ready to work through it.
Josh, you're, how, how much does it change your initial timeline? I guess it changes it by about a year, right?
Yeah, I mean, really, the easiest part is the construction, right?
Right.
You know, and actually like getting the restaurants and stuff in there, like that's actually the easy part. And what's the difficult part, I think, is getting to this next step, which is the development agreement with the city and making sure, you know, we've, you know, dotted the, all the i's and crossed all the t's as far as, you know, zoning and parking and some of the other things that have been brought up. And, you know, obviously, you know, the city's got to feel comfortable with the, with the partnership and.
It's got to work for your financing, yeah.
Going back to like vetting, like, yeah, I mean, if, if I were in your shoes too, like I'd want to take as much time as needed to, to feel comfortable about. like, I'd want to take as much time as needed to feel comfortable about, you know, moving forward.
In your best estimate, then, you know, assume we date a little quicker, get to know each other a little quicker. When do you anticipate, in your, like, on your timetable, when would you guys ideally like to start moving forward, get a development agreement in place, and really be able to start breaking down and breaking ground kind of thing? Are you thinking 2024? That could maybe happen.
Yeah, I mean.
This year.
We'd love to, you know, actually, like, start work and start construction next year.
Okay. Okay.
So, but you really can't proceed to get financing, can you, until you have a development agreement in place? Is that correct?
We can start, and we have started already, like, kind of floating the idea out to some of our lending partners about, you know, what could this look like? But I'm sure, you know, part of that will be they want to see.
Who wants what?
What the collateral is, you know, like, they'll want to see all of that stuff before we're able to, you know, close on the financing. But that doesn't keep us from, you know, exploring options, you know, right now.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? No?
I guess I have one question.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
The brick is not going to look, be great. It's gonna, it's not the brick, the rocks. We are going to keep the existing.
We like our rock.
No, it's gonna stay the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
The software our architect was using, you know, can't match exactly. But, yeah, we're intense not to, I mean, there are some changes you can see here, you know, replacing windows with more modern, more efficient windows.
Yeah.
Opening up a little bit more. If you walk in there now, like, there's not a lot of natural light, and so the only change really to the outside is, you know, adding the patio, you know, replacing the glass, you know, opening up a little bit more to let more daylight in, make that, you know, entrance in and out of the patio to the inside a little bit easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we love the rock, and we don't want to change that.
I just want to make that clear for anyone looking at the picture. You know, there's some historical buildings in Salt Lake that you're kind of using as examples, and I've been to some of those eateries, and they're fantastic. They're beautiful buildings. And ultimately, I think as a council, we want this space, we want to preserve this building and have a space for people to come and bring their kids and grandkids and talk about all the good memories there, and also have a good time eating. And I noticed on the renderings, too, if the public hasn't looked at it, there's going to be a community space in there. It's not just going to be restaurants. And so just want to point that out. If you want to speak to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, and part of this is, you know, we do want to keep a, we're calling it a flex space, really just a room that can be used for a variety of things, for events, for conferences, for, you know, pop-up boutique-type things. It could really be used for anything, you know, if someone wanted to come in and use this, their organization wanted to come in and use that space for something. Yeah, I mean, we really want to be, you know, community partners, and, you know, there's a lot of ways that we can work with, you know, the city and local businesses and other organizations in the city to really, like, we just want to lift up, help lift up the downtown and just make it a fun place to be.
Just one more point. With so much history in that building and artwork and artifacts from our town, it would be nice to incorporate that in the design, and we've talked about that quite a bit as a council, and so just want to throw that out there, so.
Yeah, no, we would love to keep as much of the, like, unique character of the building as we can, and if there's, you know, things in there that we can use as, you know, decoration or repurpose somehow in the improvements, we love that kind of stuff, so.
Councilmember Oaks.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, I've had an opportunity to be around the country, actually around the world quite a bit, and you see, what you love to see is historical buildings that you're able to repurpose. I was talking to my father about this. My dad, my mom and dad graduated from BYU High, which is now the Provo Library, but when I was going to BYU, it was a dilapidated old building that they, people trying to tear down, but they went to high school in, and it's a beautiful facility now. You go around the country to, you know, Grand Central Stations, almost every major city has a Grand Central Station, and I was in St. Louis last month, and it's a convention center now. And we had, all the booths are on the main floor, and it's a hotel. In Boston, there's an old prison that's now a luxury hotel. And what you'd love to see is that we're not tearing them down and putting new structures up. We're able to repurpose. It's not necessarily the same, but it has the flavor, and the history's still there.
Right.
And we're able to improve upon it, but make it go forward. So I think many of us were very nervous that we weren't going to find anybody that could do it, and we'd end up having to tear it down because of the construction concerns. And I think we're not going to have to go that way, so. So thank you and your team, and we're just grateful we had a couple of, you know, viable projects, so.
Yeah, thank you.
But thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, council, are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the exclusive negotiation agreement with Alchemy Design and Development for the property located at forty four North Main Street.
Thank you, Councilmember Oaks. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments? Nope. Okay, call for a vote, Abby, or Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Let's go. That's good. Okay, all right, next. Action item six C, a resolution adopting the Kaysville City tentative budget for fiscal year 2024. We have done a lot of work on this. As a council, we've spent a lot of time in work meetings and work sessions. Councilmember Hunt has gone out to each department and met with them and their employees and just really dug deep into the budget, and so we really appreciate all of, well, and everyone's done their part investigating, but she's done an outstanding job, so I just wanted to mention that. Just really to understand the budgets and to understand the way the city functions and works, and, you know, everyone's brought up some really great ideas and some great suggestions. So I'll turn the time over to Dean.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, over the last several weeks or not months, we've been working on the budget with the city council and with department heads. And again, we're grateful to the council and to the departments for spending the time and understanding the issues that we're dealing with this year. So the action tonight is to adopt a tentative budget, and it really becomes the first formal step as part of the budget process. So this is a required action, and then the budget then becomes available for the, for public inspection and becomes available for continued to work on and develop. So there are several action items that follow tonight. We'll schedule public hearings, probably the second meeting in June. And any other work meetings that the council deems appropriate, we'll have those as well. You have before you the budget summary, which includes the capital schedule, includes the budget detail by department. Let me just mention that it is the same level of service that we've provided continually. The total general fund budget is about twenty-two million dollars, and all enterprise fund budgets are about thirty-seven million dollars. So really, the action tonight is to adopt the tentative, and then we can schedule other action items as necessary.
Thank you so much. I also want to thank Dean and Levi and staff. You guys have done an outstanding job presenting it to us. All right, we don't have anyone signed up to speak to this action, and so, council, do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Blackham?
Just a question is, can you, like you said, we'll probably have a public hearing in the second meeting in June. Can you adopt the budget on the same night as you do a public hearing? Or do you, would we have to do that at the first meeting?
This budget does include a property tax increase.
Okay.
So we would.
We wouldn't have to.
A public hearing, the second meeting in June, and then there would be another truth and taxation public hearing later in August.
All right.
Good. Okay, thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments? Councilmember Hunt.
So I was speaking with a resident here who told me the following story. She said, she said about six years ago, so I don't know who was employed at that time. But at our elementary school, they needed to move the crosswalk because where it was wasn't particularly safe. She said the police came out and said, yeah, it probably should be moved over to here. And then she said, an employee came out and said, well, you live in a fiscally responsible city, and we're not going to move that until someone gets hit by a car. That's what she said was told to me. And so with that kind of in mind, I like where we've gotten to with this budget. I know we've done a lot of work. I know Dean and Levi have done a lot of work, and I appreciate all the work that's been done, but I think it still needs work. I'm okay with where it is. I'm okay with approving a tentative budget today, but I think we, there's probably more we can do with it as far as that goes. I don't know. I just wanted to kind of put that out there and say that I think we're still going to be working on it. It's still, we're going to be considering more things, more projects, more employee information.
Well, and to your point, I think sales tax numbers, sales tax numbers will come in that we don't have in real time yet. They're not all updated, so we'll have more information, right, Dean? Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we approve a resolution adopting the Kaysville City tentative budget for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments? Nope. Okay, oh, Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I'll make some comments. Yeah, we've met, just to reiterate, several times as a council, we've met with leadership in the city, and none of us want to raise taxes. Last year, we didn't do that, and we have literally been overturning every stone, looking where we can make cuts, but we're also that we can support the city in our activities. And it's been really challenging with the inflation, and everything's going up. Costs for everything, materials. We have our public works guys in the back, and every single item we do, our salaries, money's just not going as far. And we're really caught, just aware of the challenges of our residents, and we want to do the right thing. And so, as Councilmember Hunt said, we're not at the finish line yet. There's still a lot of work to be done, but we are committed to being as fiscally responsible as possible and also looking at the long-term needs of the city and how to fund those needs. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, all right, so we appreciate that. Any other comments? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion passes. All right, council member reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
Oh, we had the Taco Bell ribbon cutting today. That was exciting. It's exciting to see new businesses coming in, and happy to have them here.
Yes, absolutely, and so that's happened, and it's exciting for the city. And then the Pickler is an indoor pickleball court that's opening up. I think their grand opening will be June, I think, fifth, so wait for that, and it'll be kind of fun. It'll be a kind of a membership sort of pickleball court. And the Red Balloon Store, we had an opportunity to host the Lieutenant Governor this week for Kaysville City, and we did that at Orlando's, so that was great. We love to be able to introduce people to our city, and so it's great when we have those opportunities. And the Red Balloon Store is coming to Kaysville. It's a high-end toy store. They make handmade-looking toys, kind of like the Doug and Melissa or Melissa and Doug type toys. So that's coming.
And where is that going to be located?
That is going to go over next to Old Gris Mill in that strip mall.
Excellent. Well, word on the street.
Yeah.
Working pretty hard.
Right.
To get some other great stores in there, so.
Yes, we are. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'll turn the time over to Dean. Do you have anything for city manager report? Okay, our new city manager will start June fifth, and so he'll be in attendance for the next city council meeting, right? Oh, the one after the, okay, the second one. All right. Right, well, we're excited to have you. I'm glad we're going to have you, Dean. You've done a fantastic job. Okay, thank you, everyone. Someone make a motion to adjourn? Y'all want to stick around? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll in favor. Thank you for being here, everyone.
That's cool, huh? Councilwoman Hunt made this for my son, who's graduating from Davis next week, and so for him to wear a leg, which is so cool. I mean, if you gave me these three different colors of ribbons, I would be like, uh. It's easy, easy, crazy. So, were you there the other day? I only brought the Lieutenant Governor. I feel bad. We should have brought some people back. It went awesome. Great turnout. It was great to be back in that room. And surprisingly, got quiet, like, we, he was talking, everybody was quiet, like, he was, he was. That back room's so sweet for that. Uh, yeah, he went to talk to this guy about the housing deal. Are you talking about two hundred North and Bain Street to have a U-turn? Yeah, they, yeah, they have, and then also the other.